With that said, I'm going to introduce our moderator, Alan Schwartz. He's a national correspondent at The New York Times and keeping in tune with our mottos, famous mottos. So his motto is, "You can ask me any question you want, just don't ask me a question you don't want me to answer." Thank you.
Okay. I believe that, okay, caught a little off-guard here. I thought that the other introduction, but I'll take care of it. Okay. So, thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate it. By the way, I just need everyone to know that anyone who sends a tweet from this room will be escorted from the premises. I'm kidding, don't worry. So I just want to introduce, I guess I will introduce our panel. This is Dr. Give Baluch, who is the Global Director of the Connected Beauty Incubator at L'Oréal Research and Innovation. So if you wonder why is L'Oréal here, I can't wait for him to tell you in terms of the invisible wearable sensors. Dave Ickey is the CEO of MC10. He was developing a whole lot of interesting devices that we will hear about and one dear to my heart, which is something having to do with concussions and the ability to monitor head impacts in youth football players. So, wow, a fan there. Dave, you're the first person to get applause before you even speak. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Quit while you're ahead, dude. Anyway, then we have Dr. John Marto Taro, excuse me, who is the Vice President, Research, Technology and Business Development/Chief Technology Officer at, no, wait a minute, you have something new. Tell us your new title.
That's Vice President of Informatics.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, I got one too.
You know what's funny? It's actually a demotion. You're clapping for, no, I'm kidding. Anyway, at Medtronic Diabetes, and I really, the stuff that they're doing is really cool. Can't wait for you to talk about that. And then Dr. Daniel Salazar, who is currently Senior Vice President of Translational Medicine and Think Team at Otsuka Pharmaceutical Development and Commercialization. He leads a group of 45 scientists with responsibility for toxicology, metabolism, pharmacology, pharmaceutical and device technology, genomics, and very long syllabic words. So listen, with that, again, thank you for coming. And Dan, I want to start with you because from what you told me earlier, the value of invisible wearable and particularly health-related technology really touched your family directly just a few days ago. Tell us about that.
Yeah, thanks, Alan. I've been here the day and a lot of talk has been about prevention and how wearable sensors and consumer electronics are going to alter prevention. But we have to remember that there's a lot of critical events that happen over the holidays. I was with a loved one I don't see so frequently, and this person had some significant chest pain. And fortunately, we had a nice blood pressure cuff, were able to monitor the person's blood pressure and make sure that there was nothing really too much, you know, going on. And I thought to myself, boy, I better have a kit now, you know, the wearable blood pressure cuff, ECGs, everything, really, it's all available. And, you know, you can then really quickly, before an emergency would even get there, you could start sending that information to a doctor. So that really brought it home to me, the importance of the work that some of the technology companies that are doing and that I like to incorporate into my work.
Now, part of what we're talking about here is invisible technology and particularly with health, I think that we all know that, you know, you're wearing a Jawbone or a Nike thing, it's a badge of honor, you know, you kind of want people to see it. In fact, can you show us yours, Dan?
Sure.
Dan's wearing it. There you go. See? Look how cool he is. But if, okay, if you have a disease or a disorder or something, I mean, say diabetes, John, you might not want anyone to know that you're wearing a sensor. And I think that's one of the key things we're dealing with, the privacy aspect of it. So, John, as far as diabetes goes, okay, you guys are working on something, I guess, that can monitor your insulin levels, you know, for you and deliver insulin through a virtual pancreas. Let's just, please.
Yeah, essentially, we've developed a continuous method of measuring blood sugars with a little sensor placed under the skin, and there's a little device connected to it that will wirelessly send that information to an insulin pump. The insulin pump has an algorithm that would then determine the amount of insulin that's needed for a person with diabetes in real time. And so that's ultimately what we're working toward is an artificial pancreas to help people with that. And probably the biggest issue is making it all wearable because they've got these things on their body and we want to make them smaller and discreet. We're in Vegas right now. You may want to wear a very tight-fitting dress tonight, and I don't know from personal experience.
Personally, I don't worry about that.
A couple of my panel members.
What are you saying?
But anyways.
Not that there's anything wrong with that.
But the point is, is you really want to have these things discreet so they don't impact your lifestyle and allow you to be who you want to be.
And now, Give, you know, we started with these other guys because, you know, what they're doing is so less understandable. Clearly, L'Oréal is a perfect candidate for invisible wearable sensors.
Of course.
But just tell us anyway.
Okay. You're right, by the way, so I didn't feel any sarcasm there. No, I think it's, first of all, thank you for calling me doctor because that was really the first time in eight years I've heard that, so that's amazing.
I actually made Dr. Dre a doctor, so.
So it's a low standard, but okay. So, in general, you know, I think that a lot of people would be thinking, why would the cosmetics industry be interested in wearables, to your point? And I think what's interesting about our consumer, which is quite different from the health and sports industry, is that our consumer is a very emotional consumer. So you see that people that buy cosmetics, they have some level of attachment to the texture, the feel, and the future of cosmetics is really going into personalization. And so it's all about how can, based on the data of your body, whether it be hydration, whether it be, you know, UV, whether it be any type of environmental condition, how will that then give you a perfect product for your regimen? And I think that the wearable technology and this kind of new forefront is really where L'Oréal plans is looking into, to be able to provide that personalized service and ecosystem to the consumer.
Now, to what extent is a foray into technology, wearable technology, in a field which, you know, where it's not exactly obvious? To what extent are you trying to skew younger and get a younger group to recognize your brand and think it's cool? Is there value simply in doing that?
Yeah, I think there's a huge value in that. I mean, I think in the end of the day, when you go to startups and we're an incubator, I run an incubator at L'Oréal, it's one of our first incubators, and the idea is kind of to do exactly what you said. You have to go and sell it to other people too, so you can't just say, you know, we're a big company and we want to use your technology. We have to show that it's something that can add value to our consumers. And there's always a real aspect of that is really being able to, it's part of the fun of my job is really trying to show people how this type of technology can really be brought to our consumers. And I think the health and the medical industry and beauty are starting to kind of merge in many ways. So I think this is an area where we can kind of work with younger startups and companies and try and bring that technology to cosmetics.
So Dave, Dave, with MC10, you guys are working on lots of, lots of different things, okay? You know, the concussion thing, we can talk about, but tell me, tell everybody about all the other ideas. You're tossing around, seeing what sticks.
Yeah, I mean, really, the common theme addresses the issue of wearability because microelectronics in a rigid boxy package are just not that conducive for broad adoption, right? They're not soft, they're not easy for most people to tolerate. Some of us are, you know, technophiles and early adopters and will wear a rigid wristband. But if we want, you know, if we want the very young or the very old to be able to take advantage of this technology, we've got to make it passive and seamless. And what we're doing, the common theme across our applications at MC10 is trying to really deploy computing onto the body, so, and really dissolve the boundaries between technology and people. And there's been tremendous innovation that's happened in the consumer electronics industry that we see every year at the show. And Moore's Law has made things smaller, cheaper, faster, so we have incredible power in our palms or around our wrists, but it's still a mismatch with soft tissue on the skin or inside the body. So we're trying to, we are very focused on form factor, really for the reason of getting the highest quality data and making it, you know, virtually invisible to the user.
And what kind of data, and everybody can chime in here, please, but in terms of gathering data, how important is the data and then how important is it to have people who understand not only what those data say, but what they don't say?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's critical, right? I mean, data by itself is not useful. You want to have an actionable insight that's delivered to the consumer or to the patient. And figuring that out and getting the right simple message that keeps the consumer engaged and allows them to take some useful action that improves their everyday life is what it's all about. It varies dramatically from use case to use case, and I'm sure you guys see it in the various things you do.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is all about collecting data, definitely. And we are at, you know, a critical point. We don't really know yet how to use all the data, right? And it's going to be a big challenge, no doubt about it.
Yeah, in our case, in diabetes, there's a really great example, and that relates to activity. So if you're an insulin-dependent diabetic, you'd have to take insulin throughout the day. You've got to figure out how much to take at various times of the day. And if you exercise, that can cause your blood sugar levels to change. If you're on a treadmill, they'll go down. If you're playing a competitive sport, they may go up for a while and then come down. And so understanding physical activity with activity sensing, for example, can help you, help the patient understand how to manage their diabetes and how to deliver the insulin appropriately for whatever event that they're seeing in their life.
Now, one of the things that, Dan, you and I talked about earlier, I'm doing a series of articles now about the abuse of certain types of medications, stimulant ADHD medications. And one of the problems is that young people will get a prescription from a doctor and then sell the pills to college students and whatnot. I'm sure here, nobody here has ever heard of that, right? Okay.
Everybody's digesting lunch, I think, of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, from what I understand, you guys are working on something, it's actually a sensor inside a medication pill to, well, take it from there.
Yeah, sure. We have an alliance with a company called Proteus Digital Health, and they invented technology to embed a very tiny integrated circuit inside a tablet. With a wearable sensor, you can now detect when that pill was taken. And of course, now we could verify the identity of the person taking that medication and prevent, in the future, some of those events.
How long? How long are we talking for this kind of thing to be possible?
Yeah, well, it's several years away.
Oh, sure.
With Otsuka.
It's three or four years, not 20.
No, definitely not. Definitely not.
Okay. Because some of the, some of the things that you guys are doing, perhaps not you, Give, but when it comes to health, it's a monitoring process where the patient themselves, the wearer, it's not data for them. It's either data for, if it's a child, you can monitor something about your child remotely because whatever sensor they have is going to, boom, communicate with the phone, Bluetooth, bingo. You're going to find out when your kid has a seizure instantly, wherever they are, at the other side of the amusement park. How much of this is giving other people eyes to the health of people they care about?
Yeah, Alan, I just want to make one correction. Proteus already has FDA approval for the chip and for the sensor technology, right? I was referring to our products in collaboration with them, several years away. But yes, it is very important. One of the use cases is that if the patient wanted to, they could share information with a caregiver, right? And so that way, the caregiver would know whether they had taken their medication or not. And that's very important to know, you know? Sometimes we all forget. And, you know, you could call up and say, hey, you know, Uncle Ray, did you take your medication today because I didn't see, you know, the signal come through?
Now, speaking of health, and Give, I want to give you a chance to chime in here. When some people put on cosmetics, I suppose, not that I would know, I'm a Maybelline gal, so. You know, they might have a reaction.
Yeah.
Okay? And wouldn't know that that reaction might happen. Are we talking to the possibility of having some sort of a sensor gauge the type of skin to avoid an adverse reaction to what seems like a harmless product?
Yeah, I mean, I think to your original point about data monitoring, even in the cosmetic industry, believe it or not, it's very, very key to understanding our consumers because when you think about it, in the cosmetic industry, all the products work in a different way than in the health industry. You have these weak signals that essentially take a period of time to work and to be efficacious and to increase. So usage of the product is extremely important. So understanding the consumer's skin type, the color, the different properties of the skin and hair will help us to be able to customize the product to the consumer. But to your question that you just asked, I think similar, for example, understanding things like inflammation and hyperpigmentations and color and things like that could help us to better predict when you get age spots and how to prevent them. And at the same time, if there are potentially any adverse effects of products, I mean, that kind of information and that data will help us to be able to model it, so.
And again, part of the theme of this talk is the invisibility aspect of it. And Dave, I wanted to ask you, to the extent that it's invisible and it's more private, how does this ease communication between the patient and the healthcare provider in that you don't have to describe in vivid detail how, well, whatever it may be, there's objective data being delivered to your doctor and your conceptualization of it is taken out of the picture a little bit?
So, I mean, for the first time, you can really get a continuous snapshot of what's happening as people are actually living their daily lives. You know, it was, it's amazing to me not being involved in healthcare, but trying to innovate in healthcare from the outside. Just the way that things are done today and how treatment is delivered, a lot of times is very subjective and not very data-driven. So if there's an opportunity to have a snapshot that tells what's really happening as people are going through their lives as opposed to remembering, you know, how you felt three days, five days, seven days ago, and being able to tweak the dose or understand how a new medication's performing, there's an opportunity to do, to get better information that helps treat people in a much more, I think, proactive way. And that's, you know, that's very different from how it works in a lot of situations.
Sure. And I think, again, you can be more discreet with your description of things, which I think, you know, which helps. We don't all like talking about whatever issues we may have. Go ahead.
One of the other things, though, I think that's critical, is as this data could be going up into the cloud in real time, the value that you have is you can help make sure that people's medical condition doesn't deviate and get into an unsafe area and avoid hospitalizations or other things that could occur if you're not continuously monitoring. So for example, there's a company we have that for heart failure patients, every day the patient steps on an electronic scale and it measures their weight, simply. And with heart failure, as your condition degrades and you may have to adjust diuretic treatment, your weight would gain. So they monitor weight gain daily, and if they start to see it rise, then they, a nurse calls up the patient, makes an adjustment in their medication to help avoid what could have been a more serious event if it continued to progress and went unaddressed and untreated.
One thing that I want to bring up is there has to, you know, it's one thing if you're a fitness company and you're measuring how many sit-ups did you do, or here's your heart rate, and it's basically for fun, okay? But here, we're talking about very serious health issues. What if it doesn't work? What if people put trust, understandably, into the ability of this device to alert somebody and next thing you know, it didn't work and their reliance upon the product ends up backfiring? How do you take that into account in terms of the realities of how things work?
Yeah, and that's a great point. We have to do extensive testing to show reliability, and we will do that. And I'm sure, John, you guys will as well. And we have to, though, recognize that every treatment solution has benefit and some risks.
Yeah, we've done something similar for parents of children with diabetes. So a typical parent of a child with diabetes may wake up two, three times during the middle of the night and go check on their child. We developed a system where the child's data will be remotely sent to the parent in their bedroom. What if that connection was lost and they're relying on that connection and that information and they miss an alarm about their child's blood sugar going low? So we actually partnered with the FDA to develop new testing on how well the wireless connection was working and actually added a feature on the parent's side where if it stops receiving data, they're alerted. So the system has to alert them if the connection is broken. And in that way, they can always rely on it. If they're not alerted, they know that the connection is fine.
Speaking of parents being alerted, Dave, can you talk a little bit about the, your offering in terms of the concussion space? We all know what a catchphrase, sport-related concussion, football concussion has become, and people are trying to figure out, how do we, how do we deal with this? You guys have an intriguing answer to that.
Yeah, so we partnered with Reebok to develop a product called the Check Lite, which won the CES Innovation Award for Health and Fitness this year. And Reebok has a nice booth over in the south hall you guys should check out in the, in the fitness tech area.
Everyone gets a free concussion.
You know, so really what we were trying to do is be able to deploy sensors directly on the head so we knew what's happening. And we stay away from trying to diagnose concussions because you and I could receive the same hit and have a very different result. What we're trying to do is just make simple data accessible directly on the field, so it acts as an extra set of eyes since not every hit is going to be seen, particularly at the youth level, and gets people into the treatment path for potential concussions if they exceed a certain threshold.
And so a lot of these things are protective, okay? How does insurance and hospital politics and whatnot, how do you guys, I mean, again, Give, I want to bring you back. You look fabulous, by the way.
Thank you so much. It's the L'Oréal product.
I know.
I'm here to just look pretty, so go ahead.
You threw it for a loop. Good work.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm from New York too, so.
But, okay, you guys, but there's a lot of, you know, you got the FDA, you have all sorts of stuff, but if insurance doesn't pay for it, if insurance doesn't understand the risk-reward ratio, which is of course what their business is, how do you guys deal with that roadblock? That's often quite daunting.
Yeah, well, we talk to them and discuss what are their data needs for them to understand, and then they give us advice too on the product development, how we can make it more useful for them.
You actually get your insurance company on the phone?
No, no, no.
How do you do that?
We talk to payers.
Give me that number, man.
We talk to different payers and.
But are they open to this?
Absolutely.
Because a lot of them are very conservative and like, oh, well, you know, do they get it?
Yes, absolutely. I think we had, you know, a senior executive from United Healthcare today, and they, you know, certainly understand the power of digital health and wearable sensors, so there is an understanding. But I think you're right, they want data, though. They want data.
And you have to demonstrate the economic value, you know, of what you're providing. Ultimately, you've got to demonstrate what is the benefit to the patients, and they can monetize that benefit, and then what is the cost of the therapy or treatment? And that tells them whether it's something they're going to cover or not.
So the way we manage it is we have a consumer business which is unregulated, so we can get wearables out there, prove out the, how the product works, get it, you know, manufactured in high volume, bring the costs down. Then we can apply some of those same wearable concepts into more lightly regulated and then sometimes more heavily regulated FDA applications.
Gave, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's actually one thing that's really interesting about cosmetics because obviously we're dealing, in the health industry, you're dealing with some things that are, you know, life-threatening and it can be extremely important to do those kinds of things. But when you're in this kind of fast-paced moving field like in invisible electronics, we're able to try things a little bit faster, just knowing that they have to be lightly to no regulation in how we try it. And I think that that's part of what's really interesting about being in that kind of space. At the same time, you have another part of it which is even just as important in the cosmetic industry, which is the consumer experience. So while you have this added value of giving data to the consumer and personalizing their products, you also have to make it addictive and interesting for them to try, and they have to be interested in it, just kind of the way that Nike and other companies have done with their, with their wearables. So I think this aspect of it is also partly really important for us. The consumer has to be really in the middle and we have to address the fact that they have to be interested in the experience that they have, even beyond the added value they get in terms of their product benefit.
You know, I come from the sports world where any time anything's developed, people are going to use it well, and then they're not going to, you know, they're going to use it to get an advantage, an unfair advantage, steroids, whatever. I mean, some of the sensors that you guys showed me last night, you know, are these tiny little things. And to what extent can these things be used in the wrong ways? Can they be used to improve strength in a way that you're not supposed to? Or, I mean, how are these things going to be misused? Because you have to consider that too.
Yeah, absolutely. So certainly optimizing performance is really important. Most of our work happens in training as opposed to in games when we're working with elite athletes. You know, for youth athletes, obviously, it's more about reducing the risk of injury or, you know, trying to flag issues that might be coming up, but also trying to drive things. I think with any, with any technology, safety and reliability are critical, and there's always an opportunity for misusing things. And, you know, I'd say that you have to look at the cost-benefit and make sure that you're doing an appropriate level of evaluation before putting something out there. In a lot of cases, we're developing things to collect information and provide insights that's never been possible before, and the benefit from that is certainly huge. Always there's an opportunity for misuse, either in terms of safety or privacy, that has to be managed. And, you know, there are a lot of people, I'm sure in the audience, working in digital health that are much more expert on it than I am, but it's certainly an issue that, you know, where progress is being made as an industry.
What's the feedback that you get, John, from the clinicians when it comes to the diabetes space or perhaps any others? Do the people who have been doing this assert, everyone here is very interested in innovation and they're not afraid of it, and there's not a Luddite in this room, okay? But the 55, 60-year-old clinician who, you know, well, you know, I know the condition when I see it, okay? How do you get them to buy into this stuff?
Well, I think that they want to see the value and the proof through clinical trials, one perspective. But the other thing that scares the physician is as you start to collect this data in real time and send it up to the cloud and have a portal to dump the data to the doc, they don't want it. Because they don't want to have the situation where some patient data about some critical event that may be occurring was sent to them and they were out at a dinner party and didn't respond to it, and they're worried about liability and other things. So they want to be able to extract data when they want to extract data, but not have data pushed to them. But they were all interested in getting the data because they see the value of it helping them make clinical decisions.
So what other things, you know, we all know about the upsides of innovation, okay? What can go wrong with this? I mean, what is a really bad scenario? I mean, presumably, somebody swallows one of these things and next thing you know, you know, their ears light up or, I mean, I don't know what, but you have to think of worst-case scenarios.
Yeah.
Tell us about your worst-case scenarios.
And I think it is inappropriate indications. People actually believing more than really what you've demonstrated with the product. And that's classic, you know? It occurs all the time and, you know, that's why we're going to have all this massive data, and we're really not yet prepared of how to integrate it into medical practice. So we do have to be a little bit circumspect in over-promising too quickly.
So I want to throw out a couple of other conditions, okay? And I don't know if you guys have, you know, dealt with it already and thought about it or if, you know, we're just going to sort of see what you think right off the top of your head, okay? What can invisible wearable technology do for asthma? Childhood asthma. Go, Dave.
Well, I think I saw a product in, on the floor this morning, measuring respiration and how effectively people are breathing. There's a, you know, there's a digital health wheeze monitor on the floor here at CES, and we've talked to some clinicians interested in COPD and different ways of measuring, you know, the strain that people have when breathing as a method to see how effectively medications are working.
I just, I just had the craziest idea, okay? I just, I just had the craziest idea, okay? We did not prepare this. Will you have a product that can tell a high school senior when they're going to get a zit at the end of their nose?
Well, thanks for that idea, so sure, no problem. Let me do, let me just email my company right now.
Anyone else remember, you know, the ad? And then I got one before my date with Bob. Anyone? No? Okay, I'm too old. But, I mean, are you going to be able to do that, where you can put some stuff on before you're screwed?
Well, actually, that's exactly the point. The whole point is...
We've all been there.
I wouldn't say it that way, but, okay, it's the point.
I'm the writer, okay? So, you know.
You're, yeah, you're the expert, and when it comes to the talk, but, you know, I think, no, in all seriousness, I think, yeah, it's something interesting. It's all about prevention, like this idea of, and also the usage of products, you know, like how can you prevent, you know, women really care about age spots and dark spots and being able to understand how to prevent what's happening beneath the skin. So having something that's invisible that can monitor the data on the skin itself can help to build those models better than just bringing 200 consumers into a, you know, a center and testing it. I mean, it's much easier when you can actually monitor the data in real time. And I think also for us in cosmetics, what's interesting is we really have no, especially at L'Oréal, we really take safety very seriously. So for us, it's very important that anything that we do in our space has to be extremely to the top level of safety. So being innovative in that space can be really a fun challenge because you can't take those risks the way you can do, like in the health industry, in terms of effects and adverse effects.
And speaking of the health industry, of course, everything we've been talking about so far has been physical, you know, your insulin levels, your, you know, whatever, your heart rate, et cetera, et cetera, your skin. To what extent might wearable sensors have any impact on the mental health industry or situation, which we all know is still in its infancy in many senses?
Yeah, it's a great question. That's one of my key roles, is to try and figure that out. When we think about hypertension, we can measure, you know, blood pressure, right? Okay, and we take a medicine. But when you think about having a schizophrenic break, we have really no predictors, right? So it's very important for us to have, you know, wearable sensors and start to gather data so that we could predict when a patient is going to have a crisis and intervene. That's why invisibility is so important. Think about the social stigma of bipolar disorder or schizophrenia.
I think the technology offers an opportunity to have digital biomarkers. So just, you know, like you might measure blood pressure conventionally today or blood glucose levels, if you can get other digital biomarkers from different wearable sensors on the body and correlate those to different disease conditions, then you've got a metric you can track, you can see how well treatments do, and be much more proactive about health.
Yeah, that's our vision, okay? And it's a big one, and I'm excited about it, so.
I just want to ask, and I'm not sure how someone can tell me, we have 11 minutes. Is that 11 minutes total or 11 minutes including audience questions? Can someone give? 11 minutes total, okay. So I, let's just ask one last, one last thing before we go to the audience, okay? Which, you know, we all know what Viagra did for the pharmaceutical industry and how profitable it was. Let's face it, you guys are all in business, and you're trying to make money and trying to get the new big thing. To what extent might wearable sensors have a role in more intimate settings? And you've thought about it, you know you've thought about it, and now they're thinking about it. But there's a pretty big market out there. You tell us, tell me now, how, you've brainstormed, brainstorm now. I'll put you on the spot. John, you're on the spot, buddy.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Well, I'd say one thing, you know, if you want to use the Viagra example, so you have older males and they're, and they're now maybe doing things they didn't do for a while before going on, and the heart rate is getting up higher, and I think actually monitoring some of those vital signs and keeping them out of trouble is something where potentially one of these wearable sensors could, could help out and help you potentially, you know, avoid getting too excited.
When you're, when you have a technology that has...
That's not bad, okay?
When you're, when you're commercializing stretchable electronics, you look at different places to go, right? And, you know, our confidentiality agreements preclude me from telling the whole story, but we've explored a number of applications and, you know, there could be some promise there in the future.
You used to be MC7, now you're MC10.
There you go.
And with that, and with that...
That's a good place to go.
We will now ask for folks to come forward. The lights are quite strong, so it's hard for us to see you. So please jump up and down and, you know, have an epileptic fit. Go.
I'm Nabeen, I'm from Ohio. I represent a company called Conexius Health. Well, thank you for, this was a great session, I enjoyed it, and I've enjoyed all the sessions since the morning. Let me ask a question which is kind of at the other end of the spectrum. John, you talked about doctors and care providers getting a sea of information to which they may be kind of reticent to really look into. When we think about the aging demographic, and we also think about, well, what would patients think or consumers think about being monitored 24/7? Is there an issue about acceptance or anything that's connected to that that we need to be worried about, or, you know, if there are any concerns, how do we reassure them and saying it's nothing to worry about?
Well, first off, there's the whole security and privacy issue that has to be addressed. People don't want their medical data getting up in the cloud and being accessed by multiple folks, so that's one challenge. But then the other, you know, when it relates to a medical condition that people are living with, if you can demonstrate to that patient that having this data get to the cloud and having some math and analytics running that's going to help them have better outcomes and potentially avoid a more serious consequence, they'll gravitate toward embracing it and using it because of the value that it will provide to them ultimately. But if they don't want that or they don't perceive it, then they simply won't use it.
I think it's going to track a lot like smartphone adoption, and, you know, you saw certain demographics adopt it earlier, and now, you know, even my mom has a smartphone, so.
Wow, that's innovation.
It is, it's proliferated.
All right, who's next? Oh, I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, in the mental health area, it's a big point of discussion for us, but this is not just the sensor, it has to be part, you know, of an app, going with a cell phone, and that's also really, really important. What type of app do you create?
Next question.
Hi, my name is Mindy. I'm a consumer researcher for Wagner Eds from Worldwide. I'm curious about whether you guys think our individual companies are going to come up for individual diseases? Like you guys focus on diabetes, do you think there'll be other startups that are focused on individual tracks, whether it's arthritis, heart disease? Or is there going to be some meta-wearable device that, then you can just download, oh, I have RA, I have Crohn's, I have heart disease, and then you'll get a specific software track to monitor your health, give you recommendations, give you appointment reminders, you know, all that kind of really individualized care? What do you predict?
Well, I'll say for Medtronic, because Medtronic is not just a diabetes company. They're, actually, diabetes is 10% of Medtronic, most of it's cardiovascular, neuro, spine, all sorts of chronic diseases are managed. And one of the interesting things about a company like Medtronic today is each of those businesses is a silo, and they're all collecting data and doing, and part of this new role that was created that I'm in is to start to link that data together. Because you may have cardiovascular disease and also have diabetes. In fact, there's comorbidities with a lot of these things, and integrating all of their health and wellness data together to get a more comprehensive view of the, of the patient is, I think, critical to where the world is going to help most effectively manage them moving forward.
All right, next question.
I'm just saying, though, I think there will be some core package of sensors, right? I think it will make sense, and, you know, that'll be coupled with your whole gene sequence, right? And that'll be your base package. But then, depending on your disease conditions, there'll be custom, you know, sensors and other things done to measure status.
Next question.
Hi, Richard Pitts, physician and PhD researcher. Several of you mentioned the issue about physicians don't want data. I think the real issue is physicians don't want useless data. What they want is data that has been processed so that it can be used. The dirty secret with medical records, electronic medical records, is that it adds about two hours to your workday. It's a big deal. So who up there is working on making sure that the data that is transmitted is useful to the physician so that it alerts them, and then the non-useful data is just noise in the background?
So a common theme across digital health is that the system solution has to be mindlessly simple for it to be broadly adopted. And, you know, while our roots are in, you know, hardware and deploying electronics on the skin and in the body, a lot of what makes the solution useful are the algorithms and the analytics that go on top of that. And depending on the use case, you, you know, you can go a lot of different paths, and, you know, I think it's important to have some expertise in the particular problems you're trying to solve to figure out exactly what that is, and, but it requires talking to lots of physicians, talking to lots of consumers, and iterating on it.
I mean, I would, I would just quickly add that I do think it's important for physicians, if I may editorialize here a little bit. Editorial, I mean, physicians have to adapt to the new world. And you know what? If it adds 45 minutes, say, to your workday, tough. You know? No, no, I know, but, right.
Yeah, I think...
Right, but I mean, if it's not as useful, you know, doctors, you know, if it's not as useful as they would prefer, deal with it.
But we've got an example of, you know, in diabetes, again, you've got a sensor that's measuring a blood sugar every five minutes continuously. You get 288 values a day, you go see your doctor, you're bringing a week's, two weeks' worth of data, he's got all these tracings of blood sugars, they ate meals at different times of the day, they exercised at different times of the day, the insulin they gave was all different. How do you make heads or tails out of all that? And so there's algorithms now being developed that's trying to interpret individual events to isolate, like if people had seven low blood sugar events, what are some of the things that preceded that in the several hours in advance that may have led to that event, and distilling it down to a bullet-point message that will help the physician understand the education that they need to provide to the patient. So that's some of what's being worked on when you get these massive quantities of data and helping a physician interpret it all.
Next question.
Yes, my name is Sepiway, I'm with Fitness Trucking. My question is about, with all of these sensors, we can wear them, they may be even going into the body. If you could comment on, do these new sensors make us less intuitively sensitive through our own natural processes? And just like civilization and technology now in the West, we have an obesity problem. With these new sensors, are we going to become sensory obese and unable to, you know, function, you know, without these devices?
That's a great question.
Yes, please.
That's for me?
Oh, yeah.
I'm not, I mean, that's, so essentially, you're saying, will we get to this point where we can't live without sensors? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think, I think what he might be saying is that you don't sort of think for yourself anymore. You let the sensor tell you.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess it's, for me, I mean, I would say it's a possibility for sure. I mean, that's essentially what happens when you have adoption of any new type of technology. I mean, it's, you know, back when I was in school, a long time ago, you know, you were doing things with, without graphing calculators and with your pen and pencil, eventually you become, you know, adopted to it. But I think it's where the technology is going anyway. So what's important is how we get the most useful information out of them and that, that consumers will naturally adopt the ones that are the most important to them. So it's possible, but I would say that, you know, this is essentially the evolution of how technology works.
There's also an opposite way, though, to look at it, is that by collecting this data and having some interpretations going on, it's going to help the patient be smarter about their, their disease and managing it. So, you know, take someone with a heart rhythm abnormality AF. If you had sensors that were monitoring physical activity, stress levels, et cetera, et cetera, they could start to predict and tell the patient some of the things that may predict or initiate them having an episode of AF and make them smarter about things they can do with their care to avoid having the event. So I hope that it gives patients more intelligence in managing their disease moving forward as opposed to less.
All right, we have time for one more question.
Hi, my name is Rebecca, longtime listener, first-time caller. My question, my question is for Dr. Guev. In beauty and grooming, diagnostics exist today at prestige beauty counters or spa services where you can get a snapshot of your skin or your hair, or even shade matching and get personalized recommendations. So how are these invisible devices that you guys are working on in your incubator going to take a step beyond that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So you're right, on the cosmetic counters right now, there are a lot of diagnosis devices, and I think that they provide a lot of value when it comes to being able to get a diagnosis. For example, you have the dark spots on your skin, and here's the product. But what's missing there that I think this area will bring is two points. The first is monitoring kinetics of data, which this idea of, I said before, which is not, like, you go to a cosmetic counter once every six weeks or four weeks, and the time points are extremely long, right? But when you're using the product, the question is, what is really happening on a day-to-day basis? Is it really improving the weak signals that I have in my skin with inflammation, like you said with, so eloquently with the pimple story?
I believe I said zit.
Okay, sorry, zit, zit. Sorry. So, no, but the point will be, like, bringing this kind of invisibles and wearables will help us to be able to more effectively personalize the products. And the second point, which I think is very important, is this idea of bringing scientific and real added value when it comes to the actual technology itself. Because a lot of what we see on the market, sometimes there are issues with reproducibility, and is that data really linked to what we use when we actually develop the products and research? So that's why our incubator is really set in a research environment. So we make sure all the data that we're gathering is something that is, can be used by the product chemists and the people in the labs that are creating the actual products themselves.
So listen, folks, we're at the end. We want to make sure that we allow the next session to start on time. I want to thank our panelists, Guev, excuse me, Dave, John, Dan. I'm sure that if there are some questions from the audience for these guys afterward, I'm sure they'll be happy to talk with you individually. Thank you very much for coming.
Absolutely, thank you.
And again, please try to remove your garbage and keep it nice for everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.